Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. We'll call the meeting to order, approve the council agenda, and then the agenda additions or corrections.
I'm Mayor, Council. I don't have any additions or corrections tonight for you.
I'd make a motion to approve the council agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave, second by Chad to approve the agenda. Roll call, Dave. Hi, Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Invitation is from Crosspoint Church.
Well, thank you again, City Council, for inviting the churches and being able to give the invocation. Thank you for serving, and I'll open our time up here in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for our community and those who serve in it. But I thank you for strengthening us through the first so far. Lord, I pray for the health in our community. We would continue to see the numbers decline. Lord, I pray for the mental health in our community and the people who have experienced isolation. And, Lord, I pray for just our community to be a place where they can be connected and reconnect as is safe and know that they are valued as people. Lord, I pray for our community, we would be a place where we can, you know, have our differences of opinions, our political positions, our moral convictions, and still work together for the common good of our community. And I pray that that would take place in increasing ways. And, Lord, I pray that we would be a community that leads the way in healthy race relationships for fighting for justice for all. Lord, my prayer is also for the City Council, as they meet weekly, that you would give them the wisdom they need to guide and direct the affairs of our community and that we would thrive as a community, that people would thrive, families would thrive, and faith would thrive. You pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Dave, pledge of allegiance. Do you want to do the honors, please?
My privilege. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation, under God, for justice and all.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Already, we have a couple resolutions underneath there. Resolution number one-five-two-eight-one, resolution accepting fifty-dollar donation from Jonathan and Judy Parsler to the Law Enforcement Memorial Park Fund. And resolution number one-five-two-eight-two, resolution accepting donation of the streetlight banners from the Hutchinson Center for the Arts.
I'm Mayor and Council. I know included information in your packet specifically regarding the second resolution regarding the streetlight banners. We do have Lisa Berg here from the Center for the Arts. If you had any questions. Otherwise, I did show you a kind of a copy of what those would, or include a copy of what those would look like. So I guess it's up to you. It's kind of pretty straightforward request there, or donation, I should say.
Anybody have any questions for Lisa?
Well, it looked pretty straightforward.
All right, entertain a motion to accept those two resolutions.
I'll make a motion to accept both those resolutions.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to accept. Excuse me. Roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Public comment. Matt, is there anybody that wants to address the council?
Nope, not tonight.
Already approval of minutes. We have regular meeting minutes of February ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and workshop of February ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
I noticed on the workshop minutes, and this is just clerical thing, but on the motion to adjourn at the end of that, it was unanimous, but it was with Cook. As Cook said, "I" instead of Bagmil for the motion. I don't know how big of a deal that is, but it was on there.
No, well, I'm sure it's just a head of error, so we'll get that out there. Thanks for noting that.
Entertain a motion for those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve them with the corrections.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon. Roll call, Dave. Hi, Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Next is consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody holds something off for discussion. A is approval of resolution number one-five-two-seven-nine, resolution approving disposal of park and rec departments surplus property. It's the Zamboni. B is resolution number one-five-two-eight-zero, resolution transferring from Community Improvement Fund to the Police Facility Construction Fund. C is approval of the two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four mosquito Management Professional Service Agreement. D is approval of items for the two thousand twenty-one Statement Management Project Leading Number One, Project Number Twenty-one dash oh-one. And underneath there, we have two resolutions. We have first resolution is one-five-two-eight-three, resolution declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparations of proposed assessment. And resolution number one-five-two-eight-four, resolution for hearing on proposed assessment. E is approval of resolution number one-five-two-eight-six, resolution authorizing the story Hutchinson to conduct the historical assessment and recovery of artifact at the Franklin House. F is approval of amending the City of Hutchinson Board's admission schedule. G is approval of setting public hearing for small city development rental rehab program, Southdale Apartment Project. H is reappointment of Mike Vektor and Rhonda Schwartz to the Senior Advisory Board to January two thousand twenty-four. And I is claims appropriation and contract payments. Does anybody want anything pulled off?
So first, does somebody have their mic on? Because I'm getting a ton of feedback in my earbuds. I don't know if everybody else has.
Yep, I am too.
Coming from Gary's. Yeah, it's coming from Gary's, so.
No, I was the one talking.
Okay, that being said, I would like E pulled, and that's it for me.
Entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
I'd like to approve the balance or make a motion to.
All right, I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve the balance of the consent agenda. Roll call, Dave. Hi, Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. E, Chad.
Yeah, just maybe make sure that when you're not talking, just shut your mouth off, so.
Sure, I was just wondering, because I had EDA, and I think Matt was at that meeting. When we were first talking about buying this property, that Historic Hutch wasn't going to have any interest in it because it's so far removed from what it was. You know, obviously, it was, it sounds like it used to be a barn or garage or something, and now it's been a house for whatever, a hundred years. And Gary, are you still involved in Historic Hutch, or do you know what changed? And maybe she wasn't speaking for the group, but maybe it was just conjecture on her part, but I was just wondering what changed.
Yeah, I, you know, I talked, actually talked to Bill Arnt about it, and he don't think that it was a structure because he said that he looked at it, and there's no rough-cut lumber in it. And if it's that old, it would have been rough-cut lumber. So, you know, I don't know if there's anything in the house, you know. But, you know, if they want to look for it, I suppose they could go back through the records and see, but I don't think it is part of the house or the barn that was up there.
No problem, and I don't have a problem with Historic Hutch doing it. It's just that's what we heard at EDA, and then it kind of changed a hundred and eighty degrees. So, did you have something, Matt?
Chad, I was just thinking, you know, I was looking at when we got the abstract. It noted the, I think either the Harringtons or the Merrills, and so I'm wondering if maybe that's what piques some interest from Historic Hutch to dive into it a little bit more. Because I want to say the Harringtons was listed as one of the original owners on that, so. And maybe Dan's got something to add, so.
Yes, I talked to Miles today, and he told me that they have made some confirmation that part of the Franklin House was, in fact, the barn that was located on the Harrington Mill property, and they've got some documentation to that extent.
Okay, well, if Historic Hutch wants to dig around a little bit, I guess that's their own prerogative, so I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve, resolution number one-five-two-eight-six. Roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. We do not have a public hearing. I do have to apologize to Mike again because that day I asked him if he had many calls, and usually when, at least when I was on the department, when somebody asks you that, you always had a call, so. But, Mike, you're here tonight, so please give us your year-end report for the Hutchinson Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, and yes, Mayor, of course, you're right. We'll blame you for last, for my absence last time. And I almost missed it tonight, too. We had a call just before I was coming down here, so luckily, somebody else was able to take it for me.
If you want me to share.
Yes, please. So tonight, I'm just going to go over the annual report for two thousand twenty with everybody, so please shout out any questions you have as we go through this. I'm going to zip through it fairly fast, and I just want to start by noting that we did change the format quite a bit this year to kind of fall in line with what Matt Yannick was wanting to do with a, at some point here, a city, a full-city annual report. So we did shrink quite a bit of it, which is fine. The format, I think, has turned out pretty well. So anyway, I will start. I'm going to kind of jump through to page four. One more. Actually, two more, sorry. Okay, then just touch on some accomplishments and highlights of two thousand twenty. We did hire, excuse me, we did hire five new firefighters in two thousand twenty. That brought our twenty-two thirty-five, which, you know, we tried to focus on having thirty or slightly above. However, we did know that we had multiple retirements coming, so we were trying to be a little proactive in getting our people onboard, trained, and in, you know, in full service before retirements. And I would note, we've already had two expected retirements that have already happened this year at the beginning of the year, anyway, in January, and then we have another two pending retirements later this year that we already know about. So we're just trying to be ahead of the curve a little bit on that if we can. Obviously, as everybody, I'm sure, talks, the COVID situation changed everything for us as far as response and operations. We had a pretty good plan, pandemic plan already in place from a decade ago. We made some slight revisions to that specific to the COVID-nineteen, and then we've been operating under that same model, starting back on that second week of March with little to no changes from March until now. So that has been working well. Our focus there is to keep our people, our own people, healthy and safe, limit resource exposure and people exposure, and that has been working well. And we also, the other focus on that was to make sure we were not impacting or lessening our response and customer service, and we believe we have accomplished that as well. Another big item was some, the redo of the bylaws for the Relief Association. There was heavy involvement of several of our fire department personnel, along with the Relief Association, to, with a couple focus points there of maintaining the health of the fund, improving or giving another option for retirement, for pension retirements. And I think we landed where we needed to land on that one. So it's been received well by the firefighters, and that hopefully will be untouched now for a while. So I think if we don't have to look at the bylaws for a while, we'll be happy with that. And then in the summer of two thousand twenty, a lot of it was based on or planned because of the Main Street construction. We had set up a duty crew system to have kind of a skeleton crew, three-person crews between Memorial Day and Labor Day on the weekends, Fridays and Saturdays specifically, Friday evenings, and then most of the day on Saturdays to kind of cover what we were anticipating for higher response or higher call volumes. That program worked really well. We had, I believe it was eighteen emergency calls that we responded to during that timeframe, some medicals, one fire, one water rescue, and several motor vehicle accidents. And the crews that worked there that did two things for us. One, it gave some of those people that signed up for those shifts. It was completely voluntary as far as the shift assignment was concerned, and gave some of those people a chance to get out on that first truck and that maybe aren't normal people that are on the first truck just because of geographics where they live or where they work. And then also, because of COVID, we obviously limited a lot of our station, our normal station work that we do on a weekly or monthly basis. So the duty crews were able to accomplish routine station maintenance, truck maintenance, some basic operations and training with those crews. So we were able to keep up with kind of our normal standards there. So that worked, it worked very well. It was successful on lots of fronts. And, you know, the offset, there was a lot of those eighteen calls that they responded to, that meant there was eighteen times where we didn't have to page out the whole fire department for those calls. So that was also a cost, what we anticipated for an expense to run the program. It actually came out to about almost net zero because of the cost savings of not having to page out the firefighters for those eighteen calls. So it worked, it worked really well. All right, I'm going to jump to page five. And for those that are viewing online here or at home, this information is on the city website under the Fire Department tab under Annual Report, Operational Data. I'm going to pause just for a second because I'm going through this pretty quick. Anybody from council have any questions at this point?
Mike, were you going to touch on any of the new trucks you're getting, or is that coming up?
That is on my last page here as a note, so I'll get to that here shortly. Okay, page five, Operational Data. Again, we kind of changed the format here. It's in a more of a bar graph form, but for two thousand twenty, we had four hundred and eighty-four calls, total calls. Three hundred and thirty-two of those were in the city, and a hundred and fifty-two of them were in the rural township areas, which is slightly up from last year, but it's definitely kind of in line with where we've been. We've been hovering in that high four hundreds to five hundred for the last, basically since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So we've kind of maintained a similar path. And just for some historical data, if you go back on that bar graph, I've got the last ten years noted. And then again, just for historical purposes, I've got the year two thousand and the year nineteen ninety. So obviously, from nineteen ninety, you can see quite an upward progression there of call volume. Emergency call type, the bar graph on the bottom, that's the one that we look at pretty closely internally to kind of see what we're responding to, what's trending up and what's trending down. And then hopefully, if we see some red flags or markers there, we can start to figure out, is there anything specific? So to kind of explain that in detail there, again, it's covering the last ten years. The purple bar, which is the farthest one on the left of each column, is indicating fire. So that is something is burning, anything from grass fire to vehicle fire to cooking fire, which we had a lot of cooking fires last year. Not sure why, but we did. And then the red bar right next to it is actual structure fire. So that's an actual house or building or structure that was on fire. So that's how the state, these numbers come right out of the state reporting system that we use and the buckets that they put our calls into. So that's what we're looking at there. So again, the purple and the red are something that's on fire. The red is specifically structure fires. And that number has historically stayed pretty low. And unfortunately, on the bar graph, you can't exactly see what it is, but I think it was in, it was about fifteen for two thousand twenty, which is up a little bit from two thousand, two thousand nineteen is the lowest we've had in the last decade for structure fires, so. And the green column is rescues and motor vehicle accidents. The black is medicals. Alarms and sprinkler systems is the blue, and, you know, when you don't look at, when you just look at the numbers and you don't see it on the bar graph, you don't see the trend. But when I printed this out, I did a double take on alarms and sprinklers because I would have bet, I'm not going to go to Vegas because I would have bet wrong on this one. I would have thought for sure that that number would be going up because there's more and more alarm systems and sprinkler systems out there in different businesses, and that number just keeps getting bigger and bigger. But the actual number of incidents for us is going down in that category. Yellow is hazardous condition. That's anything from a fluid spill to a carbon monoxide event to a natural gas leak, et cetera. A lot of those yellow ones are covered by the officer only. That is a one-vehicle or one-person response in one vehicle. And, you know, again, going to those, what we consider low hazard calls, where we don't need to hold department. And then other covers the other categories. Questions on either the total emergency calls or the emergency call types from anybody on council? Okay, moving on, page six, Operational Data. Again, continued response time. That number has, we're just over five minutes. That is, there's a notation on the side there. In two thousand sixteen, we changed how we gathered that data because prior to two thousand sixteen, because if you look back in two thousand thirteen, we were down in just over three minutes. So you think, well, jeez, we lost two minutes in our response time. But realistically, what that was back at that particular point in time, we used, the number just used all of the calls, so all of the officer-only calls. Every time the pager went off, it used that to mark how fast a truck gets out the door. Well, that's not a very accurate number because when it's an officer-only call, the officer's, you know, sitting at work or at home with the call vehicle, and they're going in route right away. So we changed that in two thousand sixteen to just the first truck out the door at the fire station for calls that came in where the whole fire department was called out. So it's more of an accurate, it's a very accurate number of when the pager goes off or something serious, how long does it take us to get a truck out the door? So five minutes and thirty-nine seconds is where that was at for last year, which is a good number. Officer-only response, that number has stayed pretty consistent since we started that program. We've been running that for a minimum of ten years now. We run about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty calls per year pretty consistently. And again, on average, it fluctuates a little, but on average, that saves about twenty-five thousand dollars a year just on the pure fact of not having to page out our firefighters and interrupt their day, their work schedule, their home life for those hundred and thirty-some calls. So that is a kind of a keystone or cornerstone function of what we do, and it's been a very well-received program from all ends. So. And then some important numbers at the very end, again, four hundred and eighty-four total calls. We had three lives saved by our actions, and that's, we're very judicious with that number. That is three people that are walking around today because of actions of our crews on the scene. And then property value saved by our interventions. That was a big number this year, six million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand. And just to kind of understand what that means is, you know, if we go to a fire, let's just look at a residential situation. If it's a house, a garage fire at a normal residential house, if we contain it to the garage and save the rest of the house from any fire damage, the value of the house is put down in our data as dollars saved. So that's what that number represents, dollars saved by our interventions. Jumping to page seven, I'm just going to touch briefly on the bullet, the red bullet points there on the side. Fire safety, public education. Obviously, we had to have a call, a huge audible there for two thousand twenty. A lot of the schools, you know, were running a hybrid model. So we work with the schools. Well, first off, we had to close our doors at the fire station for all tours and visits and fire safety education that happens inside the station just for the pure fact of, we didn't want anybody coming down to the station and possibly getting exposed to something. And we also wanted to keep our firefighters safe. Again, kind of a resource exposure piece there to keep our firefighters distant and safe so we can respond to emergencies. So we had to drastically reduce the number of events we did. We did twenty-four public relations events for three hundred and twenty-seven hours, and then we did five fire safety education events for forty-eight hours. So we did see nine hundred and twenty-two total students. That was with the work with West Elementary and Park Elementary primarily. So we were able to conduct onsite fire prevention there. We had to make some alterations in our delivery model a little bit, but it still worked well. So, and just comparatively, so you kind of understand, that's about half. Typically, we're, we do around two thousand students per year is pretty normal. So that number obviously was about cut in half in two thousand twenty. And then moving forward, looking into two thousand twenty-one, some goals on page eight. Again, we're going to continue with a real strong focus on our health and safety of our firefighters. And we've got a couple programs we're running internally right now with actual focus on their own personal health and safety. We've got a few competitions going and events to improve that. Again, we've got the five new recruits that we took on are in their early stages of their training. So one of our goals for twenty-one is to obviously finish their training and get them hundred percent operational. We are going to do some advanced live burn training this year. Because we had to cut a lot of our training short last year, specific, and switch over to hybrid models and online models, which worked fine. However, we do realize that much of what we do is hands-on, and it's a muscle memory thing, and we need to get our people to, you know, roll them up the sleeves and getting back to those more hardcore physical training events. So we are going to have some advanced live burn training this year. And then if budget allows, we're going to hopefully run some modified duty crews again this summer. I'll be working with Matt and Andy on that as we get closer to summer to see how we're sitting budgeted. we're sitting budgetarily. And then the last thing was trucks and equipment and Mayor Forcer mentioned that. Just to update on, for this year, we've got a new tanker, which is a hundred percent rural truck that is already ordered, that is expected to be delivered in August. That's tanker number six there on, on page 10. I'm sorry, tanker number four on page 10. And then our current rescue truck, which responds to all of our medicals, that is going to get replaced. The chassis has been ordered. We're kind of building that ourselves. That is not being built by a fire truck manufacturer. It's going to be, components are going to be purchased directly using state bid and other resources and will be put together with an expected delivery of mid to late summer with that as well. So that is all I have. Open for any questions or comments that anybody has?
I don't think anybody has anything else for you. Mike, thanks for the.
Everybody looks good. Thanks for your hard work, Mike.
All right. Thank you for the support. I will pass it along to our firefighters. We, we appreciate everything that you guys do for us as well. So thank you and have a good night.
All right. Thanks, Jay.
I hear nothing but positive feedback for the Hutch Fire Department, so.
All righty, planning and zoning department, year-end report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me all right? Perfect. Thank you very much. I'll see if I can get this screen share up.
It's here, Dan.
So. Yeah, I want to get it in a full presentation mode if I can.
Just go to slideshow.
There we go. So thanks for an opportunity this evening to speak to you about our planning, zoning, building annual report. Obviously, as everybody knows, 2020 was a very interesting year to try to deliver public services. Just like everybody else, we were forced to modify how we do business. Part of that was with the pandemic, having to use more electronic means to receive building permit applications as well as do inspections electronically with things as go-to meeting or Zoom, what have you. And I think we actually probably found some efficiencies there that, that we could use going forward. So that's kind of, I guess, the whole theme of this, this evening is just the fact that, you know, we've, we've been able to continue to deliver the services that the community expects through the pandemic for the most part. And due to that, we have a good staff that's helped us do that. I can't say enough good things about the staff we have on board right now, noted up on the, on the board there. But those are the folks that typically the public is dealing with on the building permit side and, you know, the front desk and what have you. So just wanted to point those folks out. So the building department basically is responsible for plan review, building inspections, rental inspections, enforcement, permit administration, education and prevention. And I really wanted to just highlight prevention. I know Mike just gave his, his speech and Mike and I talked just last week about the need for, you know, the prevention. And a lot of what building code does is tries to prevent, you know, the need for more loss of property, loss of life. Obviously, the fire department is, is very critical in helping us with that. And there was just an example with a fire out at the Enterprise Center that, you know, the sprinkler systems kicked in, all the code items that, you know, we check for when people submit plans worked and really saved a, a lot of property from being further damaged. So, and also sometimes people don't like the fact that they have to follow building code or what have you, but really that it's in place for a reason and there's a reason the state has the building code and it's to protect property and make sure that people are safe. I noticed or noted the adjusted service delivery model earlier and then the Zoom inspections. You know, with state guidelines, we're really not supposed to be going into people's occupied homes with COVID. Obviously, life goes on. People are doing a lot of home improvement projects. So we've utilized Zoom and have done basically live inspections similar to this where, you know, you have a homeowner walking around the house, showing us the various things that need to be looked at. And then, you know, we're doing the inspection virtually and that's worked out pretty well. Building permits issued, you know, we're, we're kind of in line with where we have been. We had eight hundred and thirty-nine last year. Obviously, you see back in 2017, you know, we had the hailstorm. So that was a, a big number there and same with 2018, a lot of re-riff projects. But in general, you can see the chart here in Hutchinson. It's been a pretty stable amount of permits overall that we get in. And I think our staffing level is, is appropriate to handle that, that workload that we have as well. Construction valuation, this is always one of the more thing that people are interested in. And in 2020, we had just over $41 million of valuation. And again, what valuation is, is, you know, if somebody builds a house, that's $250,000 value. That's the valuation. That's not obviously what we collected in fees or anything like that. It's just a value added to the community in terms of, you know, the value to the taxes, tax value and such. So anytime that you're adding valuation like this, it helps so that, again, that tax burden can get spread out over our multiple users versus fewer users. So that's a good thing. Again, if you notice the last four years, 2017 was the highest valuation ever in Hutchinson. And, you know, the, the next three years were all pretty close, but I believe this 41 million is probably about the fourth highest valuation ever in Hutchinson. So we talked about permits issued before. This is the number of inspections we've done. This year, we did 2,275 inspections. That's down just a little bit. And you'd think there'd be a little bit more correlation between the valuation and the inspections, but that's not necessarily the case. The inspections is just what's required for the project. Sometimes it's a, a small valued project and it has not that many different required inspections in a fancier house that might be twice as expensive. So that's why there's a little bit of a, a change in, not change, but it's just not correlating perfectly to the evaluation. New dwelling unit construction. So this is basically not necessarily apartment buildings, but this is a like single family homes and duplexes added. And in 2020, we had thirty-six and that's the highest that we've had in Hutchinson since prior to the Great Recession. So that's a good thing. And again, you'll notice that really since 2016, we've been relatively consistent with the amount of new homes built in town. And I think, and I've said this probably every year I've given this report, I think this is a good, stable area for Hutchinson to be in. I think, you know, you start getting into these really big numbers and you have to worry about big declines then. You know, some communities for a while, they were up towards a hundred homes and then things declined down to, you know, less than 10. I'd rather be consistent across the board like this with our, our housing growth versus the big spikes and drops. That leads us into the next kind of piece here that probably we'll be talking a lot more about here, probably over the next few years. And that's the lot inventory of what we have left. You know, when I first started giving this report 10 years ago, we had, you know, close to 400 lots, I believe, on the books. And right now, we're down to 133 lots available in town. Generally speaking, communities like to have about a five-year supply of lots available. And obviously, if, if we're doing about 30 homes a year on average, you know, five years is 150 homes, lots, I should say, we should have in capacity. And we only have about 133 right now. Obviously, that's something that a lot of times the private sector, most times the private sector looks at, says, okay, we need to start plating more lots. And we are getting some more questions from developers relative to now looking at new areas to develop. And that's something as the next year goes on here, I think we'll be having more discussions about. I think one of the things I'd note is a lot of communities are finding that, you know, 10, 20 years ago, you'd see these two, three hundred lot developments that might be done in phases that would be all single-family homes, for instance. What we're seeing now is, is that developers are having to have a lot of different options. So there might be a section of the development that's some apartments. There might be a section that's town homes or twin homes, the single family, because they have to really get creative to figure out how to pay for the, the infrastructure and the lot cost. It isn't necessarily as easy as just saying, we're going to put in, you know, a hundred single-family homes and that's going to go into work anymore. So that'll be something we'll need to work on here in the future. I know I've covered a lot and there's a few more slides, but does anybody have any quick questions that you want to ask now before the end? Okay. See here. So new construction starts. I did talk a little bit about our valuation. So this is again, just new projects. We have just over close to $16 million worth of projects. And, you know, those 36 homes were valued at about seven and a half million. Right Way Conveyor Project out in the industrial park was about 3.6 million. Century Court West, you can see 1.7 and then various other projects that happened. So again, that's new, new projects. And then the other big piece for us is a commercial and industrial additions and remodels. So this is, you know, again, additions to existing properties. So West Elementary Project was about 12 million. Prince of Peace, 2.3 million. And then again, some various other smaller ones. And again, we've had some large projects over the last few years here that are, are school district and like the hospital oriented. And obviously, those don't come around, you know, very often, but they're important additions to the community in terms of, you know, showing that people are willing to invest in the community and it's a, it's a growing place. Touch a little bit on planning and zoning. Obviously, just hit, hit the building department highlights there. We also continue to deliver our core services through the pandemic. We started having, in the spring, virtual planning commission meetings. And then in the summer, when things kind of opened back up for a while, we socially distanced and had planning commission meetings live. And then in the fall, we went back to virtual. So we'll see where things are at here moving forward in terms of what we need to do with virtual or in-person. You know, with public hearings and such, with planning commission, it's a little harder to not have them be available for people to come in because, you know, people don't necessarily know how to dial into the Zoom meeting for a public hearing per se. So that's why we've been having some of those. Front counter at the city center, if you've been in there on the building department side, you've noticed that we, we upgraded that and, and put glass in. We'd always talked about doing a security upgrade just to make that area more secure. And then obviously, with the pandemic, it made sense to do something to separate the customers from the employees. And that actually really worked out well and we were able to use the Cares funding to finance that project. Airport zoning amendments, we did that. I got that finalized this year with the help of myself and John Olson with the airport and, and the consultant a little bit. And also got that through the county. And then we're continuing to support the Hutchinson Area Joint Planning Board and also worked with Matt and the branding initiative as well. Just a couple more slides to go here, but planning commission, we looked at 21 applications this year. We had 213 city land use applications for, you know, fences, sheds, decks, you know, those sorts of things. Hundred and four zoning reviews for building permits. Again, that's additions and things like that where people are adding detached garages and new homes and that things, those sorts of things. Sign permits we look at and then also meeting with developers and people looking at doing projects in town, you know, to make sure that they know what is required. We have 27 of those meetings. So outlook moving forward, obviously, we're kind of a little bit in uncertain times here. The construction activity has been strong despite the pandemic and I think that's been the case in Hutchinson as well as other places in Minnesota as well. We're unsure of what the long-term economic impacts will be. We're hopeful that things will continue to, to move along and, and be normal. But, you know, with building, trying to determine how much building is going to happen is, is not easy to do. So we're, we're here and we're ready to continue to do what we do, but at any time, things could slow down or continue to go as they are. And with that, a couple of projects that we're looking at for this year, obviously, the police department project. There's a project out at the Civil Air Patrol site. And Century Court West is potentially looking at adding more buildings. Park Elementary will be looking at renovations. And then we're continuing to see that residential development demand. So that's kind of the big pieces. Typically, there's more projects that come in as the year goes on that we have no idea even about now. And they'll happen just because sometimes the developers don't want to let the cat out of the bag and sometimes they're working on things and they, they don't know what's going on yet for the later part of the year, but those are the things we know about. So rental inspections, we had to basically pause that whole program just because we can't go into people's houses or apartments right now. Obviously, you need to be accompanied when you do those. And with the COVID guidelines, we weren't able to do that. So we'll resume those when, when the time is right. And just want to note that the rental units still are required to be registered with the city annually, just as they always have. And again, we inspect those on a three-year rolling basis. So we'll just adjust that as appropriate when, when we can get back into the rental units. And again, I don't have all the stats on the rentals because obviously we didn't do those. But now in working with, with the fire department and, and the building department, we really think this rental program is a good program in terms of keeping people safe and, and these, these dwelling units safe. So with that, wrap it up and have any questions, please let me know.
Anybody have any questions for Dan? Well, thank you for the report, Mr. Joe Com.
Thanks, Gary.
All righty. Have a good evening. Thank you again. Moving on, new business, no unfinished business, new business. We have requests to seek bids proposal for the so separated organic material processing system equipment at Creekside.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Council. As reviewed and discussed today in today's workshop, staff is intending to update and or replace the, the processing equipment for the so separated organic material received on a Creekside. And at this point, through the initial findings of, of the study conducted, we are more or less alluding to or favoring switching to a CASP system, a covered aerated static pile. So at this point in, in terms, at this point of the project, if you will, we're asking for your approval to seek bids on the techno, from the technology providers on the processing equipment system. There will be other components that will play into this overall project in terms of site improvements, other equipment, but this is just for the system, the technology system itself. We're anticipating a, a range of, of quotes based off of what we found throughout, during the study. So we're again anticipating it probably north of the $175,000 threshold required to go up for public bids. So requesting your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve this request.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve seeking bids. Roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Thanks, Andy. Issuing tobacco license to DG Retail LLC is doing business as Dollar General.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, with this being a, a new tobacco license request, this generally, you know, requires a council to take a separate action on approving our nine. And I know the police have done a background check on it and then came back clear. So staff recommend approval of that license.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Uh, roll call, Dave.
Brandon seconded it.
Oh, was it Brandon? I can't write and look at the screen at the same time. I I'm not not that good yet, but I'll work on it. Okay, motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the license to DJ Retail. Uh, roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Uh, we have resolution number one five two eight five. Resolution authorizing cooperative construction agreement to number one zero four four eight zero five for Truck Highway seven twenty-two and Montana Street Crossing Improvement Project Leading Number Two, Project Number Twenty Dash O Two.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, like Gary just mentioned, yeah, what what we have in front of us is a cooperative agreement uh with MinDOT that basically to allow the city to construct the uh Highway Seven and Montana Street uh crossing improvements. Uh, the next item on on your agenda is uh approving the uh the bids and awarding the contract. So wanted to obviously have you approve this uh agreement with MinDOT. Uh, and it also uh helps us or it it accommodates us to accept the sixty thousand dollars in trunk highway funds that MinDOT has dedicated to this project. Uh, that's in addition to the two hundred and forty thousand dollars in uh Transportation Alternative Program Funds, which are basically federal aid funds that the uh city applied for uh several years ago. So pretty standard agreement. Uh, yeah, uh, with the exception being that sixty thousand dollar allocation is uh accounted for within the agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I would just have one question, Kent. So actually, we're working on item number twelve uh to prove or deny that one, but then we have the backside uh of accepting and awarding. So it's two different uh motions?
Yep, it's two different items. Like I said, yeah, I wanted to bring you the agreement in front of you. Obviously, if we didn't uh approve the agreement uh with MinDOT, we wouldn't uh then have the ability to construct the project. Thus, we want to award the project on the next item.
Thank you. I'll second it.
Very motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve, resolution number one five two eight five. Roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Uh, resolution number one five two seven three, resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for Truck Highway seven twenty-two and Montana Street Crossing Improvements, Project
All right.
Project Leading Number Two, Project Number Twenty Dash Two.
All right. Sorry about that, Gary.
No, that's fine. I I just hear uh feedback.
Uh, like I said, yeah, now this is the resolution awarding the project. We did receive two bids uh with a low bid being from Donick Incorporated out of Prinsburg, uh Minnesota. We're obviously very familiar with with Donick and uh their staff and the individuals that'll be involved in this project. So uh with that, we are recommending award. Uh, the bid tabulation is within your packet. And like I mentioned, the uh the project was about forty percent overestimate. Uh, there's also a letter in the packet uh from myself to MinDOT. It's called the Bid Justification Letter. So once you get uh ten percent above or exceeding your final engineer's estimate, or actually the other direction also ten percent below. Uh, if you get a bid that's uh too dang good, you have to write a letter to MinDOT when uh federal aid funds are involved justifying, I guess, uh why your estimate was uh too high or too low. So uh with that, yeah, that that letter has been received by MinDOT and they've given me a uh a written confirmation that they're accepting of uh of the bid amount and uh basically authorizing us to uh proceed with awarding the project. Uh, the additional funds, like I mentioned, there's three hundred thousand dollars in state state and federal funds. Uh, so the additional funds, uh well, approximately additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then there are uh obviously, we had a technical consultant involved to uh design the signal system. I believe their fees are about forty thousand dollars. So approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of city uh bonding funds we've identified at this point, but uh as we uh fully shape our our construction program this year, we might utilize other funds uh to supplement this project. But uh we've had that discussion at Resource Allocation Committee and are comfortable with the proceeding with the award of this project. With that, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve the project. Uh, roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Uh, item fourteen, uh Hutchinson Lakes and River Improvement Phase One Engineering Services Agreement with Bolton and Mink Incorporated.
All right, thank you. Uh, well, we've uh, well, as many of you are aware of, we've spoken about this uh quite a bit over the last few months as of the city received a uh state bonding allocation back in uh September uh in the amount of three point one million dollars uh for our Hutchinson Lakes and River uh Improvement Project. Uh, we've also uh have named it or have an old naming convention in my mind of Camp Campbell and Otter Lakes uh restoration, but uh prior to uh formulating a project, we'll we'll clean up the naming convention. But uh at this point, what we're recommending, uh council approve is an engineering service agreement uh with Bolton and Mink Incorporated, uh who uh is now employing Todd Hubmer. So that we've been uh involved with as we've developed this project and pursued the bonding allocation. Todd has been working with us uh from the very beginning. Uh, city staff is uh very comfortable with uh with Todd's uh approach and expertise. So uh this basically continues that relationship with Mr. Hubner, uh the engineering services agreement. But before we get to blessing that, uh, we'd like uh Todd, who I believe is online. I think Tom's got him dialed up here. Todd's going to provide a brief overview of the project and uh upcoming activities.
Thanks, Kent. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh City Council, it's great to be with and with you today. Um, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Um, it's been very exciting uh summer. Um, actually, it was a very interesting summer being in the bonding bill, out of the bonding bill, in the bonding bill, out of the bonding bill all summer long. Um, as it progressed towards September. Um, but it was very nice to see that the legislature has included Otter and Campbell Lake Lakes into uh this year's bonding bill. Um, just to give you a little bit of background. Um, some of the pieces that we included uh in our legislative efforts uh over the last two years, we're talking about the history of the project a little bit. And I won't get into great details, but just a few of the items that I think are really important to remember as we go through this process is that the city of Hutchinson has a a considerable investment in this project to date. And the first part was in two thousand and seven uh when you replaced the dam with the Rock Arch Rapids. It was very important from a habitat standpoint to do that. Um, you reconnected uh hydraulically um and fish passage wise, uh Campbell Lakes and and Otter Lake to the Crow River. Uh, and as I've been made aware of, uh, the fishing has improved a little bit uh downstream of the dam there uh at certain times of the year uh since that installation. Uh, in two thousand and fifteen to present and still ongoing, um, the city has actively been pursuing water quality projects that remove pollutants from stormwater runoff generated within the urbanized areas of the city of Hutchinson. So the city has been doing its part to protect uh these lakes as resources for uh future generations and also to improve their recreational capabilities. And we know that those recreational abilities have been impacted um by runoff over um the past hundred years or so, uh and even longer perhaps. Um, so today, uh and moving into the future, we have a number of projects planned for Otter and Campbell Lakes. They include stabilizing the riverbanks on the Crow River. Expand recreational opportunities that can be access uh to Campbell and Otter Lakes from um either fishing piers or maybe some additional canoe carry insights. Removing sediment um to restore um other accessible points for um different types of boating uh per se, and also to re- to add new habitat for areas for fish to reproduce, uh habitat to provide forage and uh protection for rearing of young species. And then replenishing perhaps topsoil by removing the material from Otter Lake and placing it in areas where uh it may benefit in future crop production. So today where we stand is that the legislature has allocated three point one million. Um, this project, it was anticipated to be somewhere around twenty million in total, but it's scheduled to be phased over a number of years um to allow uh the project to proceed in an orderly fashion. Um, and what the legislature would like to see and the way that we've geared this is to try to get the input of sediment under control before we go in and do in-lake treatment. So this first round of money is really looking at stabilizing uh the stream banks along the Crow River. It's also looking at preserving some wetlands that can provide critical treatment uh in the upstream reaches to reduce the sediment load into the Crow River and into the lakes. Uh, and then also constructing a forbay, which is really at the mouth of the Crow River entering Otter Lake uh to collect sediment in a location where we can monitor it and then remove it easily from a maintenance standpoint. Now, the first part of this step is going to be uh permitting and an environmental assessment worksheet. And this is a requirement um of the project as it will uh affect more than five acres of a public water or wetland. Uh, we will develop a preliminary design for the entire project. We can't just piecemeal out say the wetlands and the stream restoration with the sediment forbay from the future habitat improvements in the lake because they're all considered a connected action by the city. So we have to include all of those things together. So we're going to really do a good job of uh input from residents. Uh, we'll be, we'll pick up where we left off. Uh, the stakeholders and agencies, those entities that um have permitting jurisdiction over the improvements that are proposed. Um, we'll also be working with the soil and water conservation districts, which have been great partners through this uh to date, and we're we're eagerly looking to get together with them and start our our dialogue as well. Um, they can work in the areas beyond the boundaries of the city of Hutchinson and have relationships with many of the property owners that we want to um approach and have conversations about doing some of these protective measures. And so this year in two thousand and twenty-one, our our goal is to be very methodical about developing the preliminary design and making sure that we have agency buy-in before we submit the EAW for uh environmental review. We'll be be meeting many times with the DNR. Uh, we've met with their staff in the past, and actually I've had a few other projects last summer with with the DNR staff uh in other areas. So we're really developing a good relationship with those folks. And we'll be able to carry that through this process, and they'll be very helpful in developing that preliminary design. What we want to try to avoid um is developing a plan without their input as we go along. And I call it over the shoulder review as we're developing the design. Because you don't want their issues to come up after you've published an EAW or after you've submitted permits for construction. It really adds expense and and lengthens and delays the project and really makes it more difficult for us to get along with our agency partners. So with that, I today, the contract that we have in front of you is really the first process here. It's to get that preliminary design, that stakeholder, the public engagement. And that EAW prepared and through that process. And once we do that, then we can come back and we'll talk about the individual items and which items um the city wishes to move forward with uh in probably late fall twenty twenty-one or uh next spring in two thousand and twenty-two. With that, I would entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for myself or Todd?
Would you be able to explain that um that collection system, that um sediment collection system? I wasn't familiar with that term.
Yeah, the the forbay, Chad?
Yep.
Todd going.
Sure. The uh the sediment forbay is really, it's really going to focus on that area where the Crow River dumps into Otter Otter Lake and that delta that's formed there. So the goal is to remove a lot of that sediment that's been deposited there and then place a kind of a a filtration. It'd be roughly a like a rock arch of some sort that allow water to pass through it and around it uh and collect sediment, allow sediment to drop out in that as a deeper pool that we can actually get in and manage that and pull material out um on a regular basis so that it will protect the future investments that will be made inside of Otter and Campbell Lake by removing material and putting in new habitat. So it's a location that allows us to prolong those, that in public investment by just a little bit of maintenance on on probably. We'll we'll figure out the exact timeline and what it will require as we go through the modeling on the sediment load and transport uh into Otter Lake.
Uh, would that affect like people's ability to like kayak or canoe on the river?
No, in fact, it's a state water trail, so we're, all of our improvements will be um very cognitive and worked with the DNR on how to make sure that we make those areas continue to be canoeable and accessible.
That sounds great. It's very shallow. Like I kayak often with my family and it's very shallow over there by Dale's Auto, um depending on the time of year.
And that's a common concern that we've heard during the entire process is some of the the depths of the lake.
Anything else for Todd or or Kent?
With that, I I should mention uh our our bonding allocation agreement. Uh, that'll be brought forward uh from the DNR to the city. Uh, the DNR obviously uh is our our agency that's been designated for us to work work with uh as we administer these these bonding funds. So that should be coming our way here in the near future. And obviously, council will be asked to approve that when uh we do see that. And then ultimately, uh, the fees that are associated with the uh services agreement with Bolton and Mink that's being considered this evening uh will be eligible to be funded through the bond allocation. But that, that's it.
And make a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to approve the Engineering Services Agreement with Bolton and Mink. Any other discussion on it? Roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All righty, governance, we have uh Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority board minutes from January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We have the Public Arts Commission minutes from January through thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and February fourth of two thousand and twenty-one. We have the City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for January twenty for January of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, does Chief Phipperson have anything for us tonight, Matt?
He does not.
Is Andy still there? Does he have anything else?
Nope, you've got Kent and Mark are the only ones that are still here.
All righty, Kent, you're up.
I don't have anything.
He doesn't have anything either.
Oh, my gosh, Mark? Does Mark have anything tonight for us?
No.
Surprisingly, no.
All right, Chad, you have anything for us?
Yeah, I was wondering if Matt could give a little update on um plans for the pool this summer.
No problem, Chad. Um, I was saying, we're um you kind of beat me to a little bit. Our new director will be starting on March fifteenth. Um, so we're excited for that. Um, we haven't, obviously had an opportunity to talk. Um, it's my goal, it's my desire that we will have a a pool season this year. Um, and so I think uh it's my desire that we will have, uh, a pool season this year. Um, and so I think, uh, you know, the objective for us is determine how's the best way we can do that and meet the requirements set forth, um, under COVID. You know, right now, public pools, um, I think they can have a max capacity of fifty percent, up to two hundred and fifty people. And you need to maintain social distance of six feet amongst swimmers and families. And so those will be some of the challenges that we'll have to work through. But it's my goal, it's my hope, it's my anticipation that we'll have a season this year. Um, we'll have to work around, you know, some of the things. I think we know a lot more now than what we did a year ago. Um, you know, there were some pools that were, that opened up later in the summer. Um, so we have some examples to go off of, but I guess Chad, the early response is, yes, it's our desire. It's my hope that we'll have a season. And we'll just have to work out those details probably in the next two or three months to, to get everyone prepared for that.
Sure. There's just been some buzz in town lately and I kind of wanted to get the information out there that we are planning on having a pool season. Um, one thing I'd like to see happen is I've seen other rec departments doing, um, with the restricted attendance is having a reservation system. Um, it's hard on families, um, to get the kids all dressed up, go to the pool or go to a facility, then have it not, right, you know, not have room for you, you know, and, um, for the families that don't live in Hutchinson to drive off, drive up to town, you know, it'd be nice if they could reserve like a three-hour block or something. Um, it seems to work for other places, but that's something that maybe staff could work on ahead of time, because it's not gonna be easy to implement that, I would guess. Um, but I know we have some reservation systems already in place. Um, but that'd be something to do. Um,
Sure, and then also, I mean, you, you need, we had talked, you had mentioned a couple other communities, um, that use some reservation systems. If you could maybe just throw those out. So at the very least, we can look to see, maybe it's similar to what we have or if it's something that we need to look at.
Yeah, I know Maple Grove, um, uses one for their aquatic center and for their, um, they have that outside ice oval thing, and I know they use it for that. Um, I want to say they use the program Sign Up Genius. Um, like Wheel and Cog uses it as well, because they have limited capacity now. Um, and I, I've used it for Wheel and Cog and it worked pretty slick. It was easy to use and I don't know what the charge is for it or anything, but, um, from a user standpoint, it was pretty easy to figure out, um, on, on my end. Um, and then the other thing I was gonna mention with the rest of the council is like, we should probably mentally prepare for, um, how we would fund a deficit, you know, because obviously if the aquatic center isn't firing on all cylinders, there's gonna be an economic piece to that and how we would want to address that, you know, if we're committed to, um, having a pool season, we have to be committed to having a funding mechanism, because it's not gonna be at the gate. So I don't know if people, how people feel about using some, like, excess fund balance or, um, what. But, you know, we always say it's the rainy day fund and, um, we haven't had to use a lot of it for COVID yet, because we had some federal government help. And maybe we'll get another round here with the next bill too, but maybe we can use some of the excess fund balance or maybe some, we'll get some money in this next, um, COVID relief bill. But, um, something we should think about, because it's not gonna be a little amount of money, so, um, so we don't spring it on ourselves.
Yeah, and I think Chad, just to add to that, you know, one of the things, you know, a lot of people ask us, well, why did you close last year? Um, you know, and I shared this with the council and I shared this with those that asked, we were looking at a two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar deficit, um, with what we knew at that time. Um, I, I don't believe it'll be that high if we open this year. Um, but that'll be something to work that we'll do between now and when we're open, just so everyone has a, an idea of what we're looking at. Obviously, we'd have some reduced revenue, but I think we'd also have some reduced, um, expenses as we look at potentially what staffing will look like. So, you know, we'll spend those next couple of months putting that together, formulating a plan, and then looking at what that financial impact will be, uh, on the city as well.
Well, hopefully the restrictions will be lessened, so maybe, uh, we'll have a full-blown season. Hopefully, I'll cross my fingers. Anything else, Chad?
Oh, that's all I had. Um, it kind of came up last night at my house. My six-year-old asked my wife and I just pretended I didn't hear him and kind of looked away. So, um, I, I created myself some shade for a little while, I guess, so.
You know, Chad, I was, as I was thinking about this, um, I'm starting to learn more and more that it sounds like Benny is running the, the Parks Department portion of, of Chad on this, on the city council.
He, he is a passionate parks user. Um, and I don't know if there's a person, um, that uses the park system much more than he does. So his, uh, his feedback's very valuable.
Definitely, the little kids do run it, so, uh, anything else?
Nice thing, isn't there? Uh, the kids are brutally honest, so you get very unfiltered feedback, which is nice. So, but that's all I had tonight.
Uh, just wait till you have grandchildren. They, they really let you have it. Yes, very. Dave, do you have anything for?
No, I do not have anything this evening. Thank you.
Brandon.
Nothing here either. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Matt?
Um, just two things. Uh, first off, as I noted, our new Park and Rec Community Director is planning on starting, uh, March fifteenth, so we're looking forward to her joining us. And then, um, the core planning group for the, the police station, um, Gary, I know you're on that, uh, they meet this Thursday at one thirty to kind of look at, you know, we're getting closer to those finalized plans. We're probably at about ninety percent, um, complete here. Um, and so we'll start looking at those. Um, I think our hope is to have that on the Planning Commission, um, in March, and I think we'll be at the first meeting probably in March to the council to take a look at those. So, um, just a reminder, that's coming up this Thursday at one thirty. That's it.
All right, thanks, Matt. Uh, I really don't have nothing else. Just, uh, people, uh, I think we got through the cold part of winter, hopefully. So, um, I know it was nice to, you can tell we're hardy Minnesotans when it's like, uh, thirty degrees out and we have t-shirts on already. So, um, with that, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
With all your reservations, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Chad. Uh, roll call, Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Brandon.
Hi.
Hi. Where's Aaron? Thanks, everyone.